Oh, take a slide. Gotcha. Gotcha.
I was just gonna bring a cook talk.
That she has plans for dinner?
No.
That'd be easier to live with than... Yeah. It's at the Hall and Wynn. That'd be great.
Well, that was hard.
That'd be awesome. I'm planning on putting a bunch of water on Monday.
I will not be there this evening, per Heath. I'm traveling. I'm scheduled to be there next meeting, though. Just a couple left. I wouldn't have... Okay. So he's not coming, y'all. He's not coming. Heath will not be here.
All right. This is my surprise face.
Sir?
It is shocking.
Okay, so that Thursday I'm going to Texas Crisis.
Well, to be honest, we... When I was working like him, I had one...
No, his surprise face is shocking. Look how surprised I did.
He would just... Thirty seconds. Let's get ready to govern.
Yep.
Game face?
Yeah.
Your boy.
Scooted towards you. Did you notice?
We need one of these that doesn't hop around so much.
You need to just gently tap it. It's the statement of holding it.
Had it upside down. That was close. I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, September the 26th of 2023. Time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Hargis, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Briscoe.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Heath Rosenstein. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Will you please stand if you're able and join Councilman Briscoe as he leads us in a word of prayer?
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings and please guide us tonight as we conduct our city's business. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Sounded good out there. All right, that takes us to item D, Presentations. The first one is a plaque presentation for Best Practices Accreditation to the City of White House Police Department. Chief Hunter with Kilgore PD, will you please do the honors?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council Members, and Citizens of White House and guests, good evening. My name is Todd Hunter. I'm the Police Chief of the City of Kilgore. And I'm honored this evening to be presented to the Texas Police Chiefs Association or representing the Texas Police Chiefs Foundation and the Accreditation Committee. The Texas Police Chiefs Association is made up of seventeen hundred professional law enforcement executives throughout the state who are dedicated to improving the delivery of our police services. I'm here this evening to present the City of White House and the White House Police Department with their Certificate of Accreditation for Achieving Compliance for the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices. Approximately fourteen years ago, the Texas Police Chiefs Association developed an accreditation program for Texas law enforcement. Many of you are aware of accreditation programs for schools, universities, banks, and hospitals. These programs are professional excellence that require independent proof of compliance with a set of rigorous standards. The Texas Best Practices Program is an accreditation program that has a hundred and seventy-three challenging standards for law enforcement. These standards address the full range of law enforcement operations such as use of force, protection of citizens' rights, vehicle pursuits, officer training, arrests, search and seizure, patrol investigative operations, and property and evidence management, just to name a few. The program has become the new gold standard for professional law enforcement in Texas and agencies across the state are working diligently to meet these requirements. This is a voluntary program at this time. Your chief set out to do this voluntarily. No one forces this agency to participate. Approximately two years ago, Chief Robinson and the White House Police Department began this process of proving the compliance with these difficult standards as they had to prove their compliance to well-trained independent assessors who actually came here onsite and went through their records, toured their building, rode out with officers, and so forth. It was not easy to comply. The agency had to do a complete audit of its policies, procedures, training, and operations in order to meet these standards. The process culminated late this summer when trained assessors came here onsite, as I'd said earlier, police executives from other parts of the state, and they made an onsite inspection. These assessors interviewed staff, inspected facilities and operations, rode out with field training officers, and ensured compliance with all of the hundred and seventy-three standards. Their report was then sent to Accreditation Committee comprised of nine serving police chiefs from around the state who reviewed the report and voted to award accreditation status to the White House Police Department. I am one of those chiefs serving on that committee, and I was very honored to have another East Texas Police Department join our ranks. The vote was unanimous. During the process, the White House Police Department has proven that it meets or exceeds all of those hundred and seventy-three standards. There are currently over twenty-eight hundred law enforcement agencies in the state of Texas. We're a really large agency, our state. At this point, only two hundred are accredited. This evening, we will officially recognize the White House Police Department as the hundred and ninety-sixth accredited agency in the state of Texas. What does this mean for you and your citizens alike? The Accreditation Program assures this council and the citizens of White House, Texas that your agency is operating in a manner that reflects the current best practices in law enforcement. It means your agency is one of the very best. Their certificate that we will present this evening is a symbol of the professional excellence. However, the real value of the program is in the process that they went through to attain it. And as I talked to your chief, it's also in the process to maintain it. In four years, he's going to see those assessors back again, and they're going to go through this same process. This is not the end of this process. The program consists... This program assists the agency in maintaining compliance with the standards. The agency will submit annual reports and analysis to ensure continued compliance throughout the years. Your police department has proven to the trained and independent assessors that they are one of the best in the state. You should be very proud of those. And I would ask the chief to come up now as we present this. The Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation. To all that see this certificate, note that the White House Police Department, having fulfilled the necessary qualifications and mandatory requirements of the Texas Police Chiefs Association, the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices Accreditation Program, by voluntarily proving their compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Best Practices, to the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation Board of Directors do hereby award this certificate of recognition effective the thirty-first day of July, 2023 through 2027. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you, Chief Hunter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hunter.
Thank y'all very much.
Chief Robson, anything you want to say before you?
Can we get a picture with the officers that are here since it's not just...
Starting to see how difficult this process was, chief. Anybody?
One, two, three.
Three.
Thank you, chief.
Excellent.
Thank you for letting me present this on behalf of the Texas Police Chiefs Association. And again, we're very delighted to have another agency in East Texas achieve this standard. And we're fully in support of your chief. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hunter.
Thank you.
So it's, yeah, on behalf of the council, it sounds like you just found the hardest accreditation out there and decided just to jump right into it. It's a big testament to your belief in yourself and even more the belief in your department that not only could they reach those standards, but they could help you get there. So thank you all for the hard work in that. It means a lot. Safety, security, peace of mind in the city. It's a big part of why people select to come out here to White House. And you guys are a big part of making that happen. So, thank you.
All right, that takes us to introduction and recognition of Alex Anderson, certified county clerk. Mrs. Luss? Call her to the front of the class.
Mayor and council, I would like to introduce Alex Anderson, our municipal court clerk. She is here tonight with her husband Matt and her son Brexton. Alex began employment with the city in May of last year. And during her short tenure, has completed a city court software migration and court coursework and testing for her Court Clerk I certification. To those of you who may not know what the Court Clerk Certification Program entails, it allows experienced court clerks to demonstrate their knowledge of statutes, procedures, and ethical guidelines applicable to Texas Justice Courts. I'm very proud of her accomplishments that she has achieved, but she has not finished yet. She's already submitted dates for her Court Clerk II certification. This is all made possible by Alex's hard work and dedication as well as the support and training through the budget approved by our city manager and city council. With that being said, as of October 1st, Alex's job title will change to Court Administrator. Congratulations, Alex, and thank you to our city council and city manager.
Yeah, so first I'll thank council for providing those, funding those opportunities for continuing education and for the city staff recruiting and environment. But for Alex, I mean, you did the work, right? You just... That's like saying where you carved the path of a giant mountain and you, you know, you walked the path, so.
It wouldn't have been possible without the council, I promise.
Thank you. All right, it's proclamation season. That's going to take us down to D3. We're going first off, National Night Out. Hope you enjoy my voice. Here it comes. All right, so this proclamation reads, "Whereas National Association of Town Watch, NATW, sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2023, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out Campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in White House to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and to work. Whereas the neighbors in White House assist the White House Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2023. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors in White House come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, Texas, do hereby call upon all neighbors in White House to join the City of National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out and proclaim Tuesday, October the 3rd, 2023, as National Night Out 2023 in the City of White House. And when it's whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed on this twenty-sixth day of September, 2023." Everybody get ready to party. It's coming. All right, that takes us to the next proclamation. One moment. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month for 2023. "So whereas the crime of domestic violence plagues our community and violates individuals' autonomy, safety, privacy, and humanity through systematic use of emotional, verbal, psychological, physical, sexual, and economic control and/or abuse, including to children and the elderly. And whereas in 2022, East Texas Crisis Center provided services to seven hundred and ninety-eight survivors of domestic violence, and the epidemic of domestic violence affects people of all genders, race, and socioeconomic groups, and therefore requires an active and engaged community to prevent and reduce domestic violence and to ensure that survivors have access to all forms of support. And whereas advocates, counselors, law enforcement officials, community leaders, clergy, healthcare providers, and others concerned citizens are working together towards a collective effort to end domestic violence. And whereas we must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals to applaud their efforts and to help increase public understanding of this important problem. Now therefore I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, do hereby proclaim the month of May, or the month of October, 2023, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to actively participate in programs to work towards eradicating domestic violence, improving victim's safety, and holding perpetrators accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society. And when it's whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of White House to be affixed on this twenty-sixth day of September, 2023." All right, one to go. You guys are doing great. This is a World Teachers Day proclamation. "Whereas White House's future strength depends on providing high-quality education to all students. Whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, plans, and supporting students. And whereas our White House teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-19 crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas #TeachersCan is a statewide movement supported by more than a hundred and fifty partnering businesses, organizations committed to elevating teachers and honoring their critical role they play in the success of Texas. And whereas the City of White House... Whereas the White House City Council joins #TeachersCan and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day. Now therefore I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, Texas, do hereby proclaim October the 5th, 2023, to be White House Teachers Day and encourage members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside of your homes or businesses the week of October the 5th as a symbol of support for our educators. And when it's whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of White House to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of September, 2023." All right, lots of great stuff happening in the community just based off of that. And speaking of which, community interests. Mrs. Black, take the way, please.
Mayor and council, just a reminder on some events that are coming up. The Parks and Recreation Foundation and the White House Area Chamber of Commerce will hold their ribbon cutting for the new pavilion at Black Hawk Creek Hiking Bike Trail this Saturday, September 30th at 9:00 AM. As you mentioned, Mayor, National Night Out will be held Tuesday night, October 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here at the City Park. Keep White House Beautiful is hosting their citywide garage sale on Saturday, October 14th. We do still have our park survey open and encourage everyone to participate in that if you haven't already. And we will hold a public meeting on Monday, October 16th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers with the goal of really prioritizing a lot of the park projects that have been discussed or mentioned in those surveys. And then the Fire Department will host their first annual Fire Prevention Saturday on Saturday, October 21st here at City Park. They have a lot of things, a lot of fun things planned. If you all remember this current, this whole year, I believe we purchased a new... It's an inflatable fire safety house, so it really kind of gives kids an opportunity to go through it and learn what they should and shouldn't do in the case of a fire. So they have some really neat things planned. I encourage everyone to attend. That'll be from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, October 21st.
Will there be a live fire extinguisher demo?
Probably not a live, but we've, we've, Mayor and council, we've got lots of plans. We have fire extinguisher stations, smoke alarm stations. We might have some knot tying and ropes with the kids, pictures with the firemen. A lot of this is going to be lighthearted and educational.
Maybe some seltzer bottles. That'd be fun. Did the recent rain that we experienced have any effect on anything that's currently enforced?
The burn ban was lifted in Smith County this month, this week, today. And I've decided to go ahead and continue not holding off on administering permitting any burn permits until Monday, and we'll reassess. I kind of want to see what that index does because we're going to have a pretty rapid warm-up this next week. It's going to dry up, so let's see before we start letting people learn again.
Sounds like a great plan. Anything else from council on the matter of community interest?
How many burn permits do you get a year, just ballpark?
I would have to look that up, but it's, I don't know. It depends on a lot of them are commercial, a lot of them are residential. I'd say maybe on average, five to eight a month. It just depends on the season. It just really depends.
All right, anything else? That takes us down to public forum. Ms. Hargis, I didn't see anybody sign up, so is that true?
I'm sorry. I'm going to sign up.
All right, we're getting into it. That takes us to the consent agenda. So the only item included in the consent agenda is the minutes from the previous meeting. You have some corrective minutes that were printed and provided to you. It's like changing air on attendance. So if there's nothing on those minutes that you want to move off into the regular agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, with that, we're going down to item H, Other Action Items, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Public Hearings. Number one, this is a long one. Consideration, Discussion, and Action on Issuing Request for Proposal (RFP) for Administrative and Plan Development Services for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, CDBG MIT, Resilient Communities Program, RCP, Grant Program Administered by the Texas General Land Office, the GLO. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, we just wanted to see how many acronyms we could fit in there. As you all know, our last, our most recent conference of plan was developed in 2005, and we've been researching different ways that we can get that plan updated for the city over the last several years. And there is a program available. It's the CDBG MIT Grant Program that has funding available for this type of use, and it's related to the flooding that we experienced in 2016. It is a 100% grant-funded opportunity or grant reimbursement. It has some stipulations in what must be included in the conference of plan. All of these things are things that we would include anyway. So staff is asking for your agreement or approval for us to issue a request for proposals for a grant firm to assist us with preparing application materials for this funding.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve... I need to read this whole thing. Don't mess with me. Issuing Request for Proposals for Administrative and Plan Development Services for the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation, Resilient Communities Program, Grant Program Administered by the Texas General Land Office.
Second.
Good job. Good job.
But you said the city manager.
Yeah. Wait, what?
Councilor Harris, can you amend your motion to include to authorize the city manager to release those RFPs?
Yes, I amend my motion to include that I authorize only the city manager to authorize those RFPs.
And I still second. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. On to item H2, Discussion, Consideration, and Action on Authorizing the City Manager to Execute an Updated Municipal Maintenance Agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, the Texas Department of Transportation has provided the city with an updated municipal maintenance agreement, or MMA, for execution. They are sending this to all of their cities and partners in the region. And it's included in your packet if you'd like to read through it. Basically, this agreement outlines the responsibilities and partnership of TechDOT and the city and how we work together to maintain rights of way along state roadways. So staff has reviewed the agreement and recommends approval.
I did see something in there. They said that we are tasked with enforcing the TechDOT easement for any existing or encroachment?
Yes, sir. And that's the same as what's in the current agreement that we've had with TechDOT for quite some time. And...
So we wouldn't lose our trees that are planted. Do you know of any encroachments that would be enforced?
No, this is more like if a business were to put a sign within TechDOT right-of-way. And they want us to be the ones responsible for enforcing that they move their sign or that they're not able to place a sign in that right-of-way. That's probably the one that occurs the most.
And knowing that it was in the previous one is good. I just didn't want to be under this agreement and all of a sudden we need to get rid of some of the stuff that, you know, is near the easement that maybe people enjoy.
Sure.
Okay, good deal. The matter of sweeping was covered three different times in this one. Under Article 3.1(c), the state will assist us in sweeping. Article 4.1(c), we're responsible for it. And also in Article 2, or Article 4.2.e., we're responsible for it. So I think it's two versus one. I think we're responsible for it, just in case, in case that comes up.
Or if they feel like it, they'll sweep, but don't count on it.
Yeah. So we used to have sweeper, we had some kind of sweeper truck at some point, and now we don't. But it'd be great if they could help us with that when we... That's all I saw. Other than that, it looks like it's, it's a, it's a really fair agreement.
May I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you may.
I'll make a motion authorizing the city manager to execute an updated maintenance, municipal maintenance agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. All right, item H3, Discussion, Consideration, and Action on the Purchase of Tasers for the Police Department. Chief Robson, you going to lead this one?
I will take this one.
All right.
Mayor and council, I want to say one thing. The accreditation takes all of us. So I know mine is mentioned a whole lot up here as chief, but it takes all of us. And I have one of the best teams you could ever imagine, ever want, and those guys do a great job. First of all, I want to announce that we don't have any openings.
Oh, wow!
We've had two start over the last couple of weeks, and we've got another one starting next week. Excellent. With that, we're spending some money to get everybody outfitted and going. So one of the things that happened in this process of getting people hired, we realized that we are short on tasers. And I was thinking back through this, and part of the reason is the way things kind of fell with people in training, we never really got to a point where there wasn't so many in training. And now with the additional employees, we are in need of a few extra tasers. This isn't a bad thing. What we've actually been doing is a couple of us in the office have given our tasers to people in the streets. And it's been fine, but now we're at a point where we can't do that because there's no other to give out. So at this point, we are in need of six tasers. That will provide us with an extra unit in case there's something that happens and we need to get one of them worked on. Tasers are one of the most important parts of our uniform. It is something that was created probably fifteen-plus years ago, back when I was a new officer in the street, this came out. And our officers undergo extensive training on when they can use it and how to use it because there can be some liability with not being used correctly. So I want you to be assured that we are being using them properly. That's part of the accreditation, the improvement, and we do use these properly. One of the things about them is the mere fact of having it on the bill or pulling it out creates compliance and creates a situation where it can quickly be escorted. Many times, most of times, we don't even use them. We just have them. And people who want to not follow commands see that and will go into compliance. And it keeps us safe. It keeps them safe. If we are able to get somebody into handcuffs or whatever we are trying to achieve without somebody getting hurt, that's a good thing. And that's good for us. It's good for them. It's good for the city. One thing about it, it is a non-lethal or less than lethal option. And we only use it when deadly force is not the option or something less is not or has not or will not work. Sometimes we can use other things like OC and those types of things, but each situation dictates when we will use it or when we can't use it. So like I said, we want to go ahead and build six more units. And that will get us to the point where we're able to allow everybody to have one. And one thing I, we found out when I started looking into it, they are on sale. So we can save 10% right now. In fact, when I began, when I began working on them, they were not on sale, and now they're on sale.
Buy five, get one free, right?
Almost, 10% off.
Not a bad deal.
Maybe everybody's at the end of their, 20% of their turn.
Does that leave?
Ben, probably is what he did.
Does this amount leave you with any spares?
This leaves us with one spare for right now. And then, of course, we, if it got to the point where we needed some extras, we would go back to allowing some of the people in the office not to have one. Like our investigator would be assigned one, he doesn't always need it. So we can hand that back out as a temporary until they get repaired. Every one that we would have currently and that we're beginning, will have warranty. The new ones have five years, the other ones are, I think there's a year or two left on those. Any other questions?
Any questions from council?
What's the total price roughly?
Twelve thousand, one thirty-four.
Okay.
With 10% coming off of that.
That's with the 10%.
That's with the 10%.
Oh, yeah, it is with.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of six new taser X two systems while they are on sale.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. With that, we got some tasers. Motion carries. All right, this takes us down to item number H four. Discussion and approval of ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine two six dash zero one dash FY 2022, 2023 budget amendments. Is this you, Ms.? Okay, Ms. Lusk is up here. Awesome.
Mayor and Council, in your packet, I have provided budget amendments for the 22, 23 fiscal year. These amendments are to adjust revenues or expenditures to show the actual costs incurred during the year. Our new items not included in the adopted budget, but approved by council prior to the purchase, such as the speed humps, Hagan Road striping, and water pipe insulation. Staff will answer any questions you may have and recommend its approval.
You'll see in Exhibit A, detailed explanation for each one of the budget changes is included. Thank you for that, that really helped. So interest income is, with interest rates where they are, that's crazy that there's almost 400, over $400,000 in interest income. If you didn't see that coming. Helps for some of the other things that weren't expected. Well, some of them, some of them were decisions, some of them were unexpected.
Mayor and Council, and that interest income, Keith Rosenstein actually brought a program to Jennifer and I that it's a, an investment pool that's approved in our investment policy, and they pay interest daily. And so not only were they paying a higher rate than our local bank, they were, they pay daily. And so we've really seen the significant impacts of switching some of those higher funds over to that investment.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. All right, any questions or comments from council on this one? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance two-three dash zero nine two six dash zero one for your 2022, 23 budget amendments.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. All right, with that, the motion carries. We're down to item H five. Discussion, consideration, and action on ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine two six dash zero two, establishing the office of emergency management. Oh, we got both chiefs. All right, Chief Johnson.
Mayor and Council, mine's pretty simple. It's a mere formality. Now that we're working directly with Smith County in our emergency management efforts, there's some formalities, and this is a document, and we put this in place, and it's kind of required by the Texas Department of Emergency Management. It's not really restricting to them or us, but it, they're organizing their players in the game, if you will. And so I asked for approval on this. The nice thing about where we are with our emergency management planning, we've been doing a lot on our own. Now we're starting to see a lot of cooperation with the county. It's really exciting. So there may be some more formal documents that come up, and we'll continue to support what we're doing towards emergency management.
I got to hear a little bit about this while I was in Austin at the TARC convention, and they're really leaning on the council of government organization as regional entities. And all of the emergency management people at the Texas level are reapplying for their jobs after the reorganization. Yeah. So some of the, now that it's at the COG level, there's overlap maybe between a couple of the previous regions. So there'll be one person serving there. And some of them, it's going to be two people coming in to serve what used to be just one region. But there are less positions. So it's going to be, I don't know if you have a favorite in there, but.
I've got one favorite, I do.
Excellent. Reach out to them before, they might get a raise, they might get advanced as well, so. It's great to see it, it's starting at the state level, it's coming all the way down to municipal level. And I'm glad this is in your hands, your capable hands for this. Appreciate it.
We're doing good things, it's actually kind of fun.
All right, any other questions or comments on this, on this item? No, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval for the declaration of an office of emergency management for the city.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. All right, that takes us down to item number six. We're considering future agenda items. Anything you'd like to see on the next agenda? That would be the second Tuesday in October.
Just an idea, Mayor and Council. There's nobody that loves our library more than me. I use them extensively to get me books and I, in retirement, now retire, I enjoy them getting books that I can read and enjoy, all that stuff. Sometimes I think that maybe it would be neat to have the library come once a year to present where they are, where they're at, where they're going, maybe by physical appearance or maybe just a, a report. There's nobody that supports the library better than me. I mean, I think it's a good educational entity for the city. And it's just an idea that maybe once a year, we can have them appear, you know, to give us where they're at, where they're going, and maybe future aspirations of interest. Just an idea.
So if we put them on the agenda, it's almost like we're calling them into class. So maybe we could reach out to them and see if they're comfortable with it. I know the library director's pretty new, I think she's three weeks old, four weeks old?
Yeah, that's right.
Something like that.
That's right.
So, yeah, it'd be good to give her a chance to get her academics in order before she plays.
Because they do such a good job, you know, they really do. Good money spent, you know.
Excellent. Anything else for future agenda items? All right, that takes us down to item I, administrative reports. We have received some reports from staff. Mrs. Black. KPIs.
We see that our water revenue made a comeback in the last two months of the year.
Yeah, that's pretty good. That's an understatement.
Record high.
And that typically happens.
Yeah.
But.
That's a new cre, that's a big increase.
Yeah.
It was.
Dry summer.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but, yeah.
We needed it because we had some unexpected capital projects that we had to do out of the utility fund this year, so.
That's good.
Glad to see that. And we're going back up a little bit.
Even sewer revenues, sewer services.
Water revenue goes up, usually sewer does too.
That's right. Bank interest, look at that chart.
Sales taxes.
That's the interest rates pretty much going up at the Fed level, I would imagine.
Only if we're keeping up with inflation.
Oh, yeah. Councilman Lowy asked about permits, is that, oh, this is development services permits.
Yeah.
Fire permits, yeah. Inspections, lots of code enforcement, thank you, Jody.
We added that chart in August for August. Or Susan and Jody added it. Okay, you can also see what our calls for service did in the fire department during this dry month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a large portion of their time is EMS when they're, when they're out on call. Fire prevention worked, thank you for that.
Water consumption. Yeah.
Hmm, August was man.
Yeah, yeah, brutal. Still is.
Excellent. Cases sent to collection. I guess we don't have an officer for every five people, so we have fewer of those. Traffic stops. You can tell we're getting better staffed by how much we're able to pay attention to things like traffic, so that's good. That seems like a lot of open record requests. Is it, is it always that way?
There is. And that's just police department open records requests. Mine, I don't think I actually have a KPI for much.
Yeah, you know, six years as elected official, I don't know what I would want to request. So I'm, I'm glad that people are interested. That's good. It looks like all the graphs are going in the, the right direction. Meals on Wheels hit a record month with what their deliverance, that's good. Eight eighty-five, yeah.
They do a great job.
And it's, we're, we're rare that we're completely volunteer-based. We don't fund their vehicles, pay the personnel, it's all, it's all volunteers, it's amazing.
Library probably hasn't been updated.
No, they have, they gave us their numbers, yeah.
Yeah, they're starting to do that. But I'd still like to see, you know, presentation.
Yeah, I bet they would appreciate that opportunity too.
Just once a year, yeah.
All right, anything else on the KPIs or the numbers before we move on? We have an income statement that was posted as a part of the packet. Is there, if there's any questions on that, then we can go into that. All right, if not, we'll be done with section I, and we'll go into item J, executive session. Pursuant to Chapter five, five, one, Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time, if deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session to discuss all or one of the following topics pending or contemplating litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section five, five, one dot zero seven one, possible purchase, exchange, lease, and value of real estate pursuant to Section five, five, one dot zero seven, two, personnel matters pursuant to Section five, five, one dot zero seven four, economic development negotiations pursuant to Section five, five, one dot zero eight seven. Today we're going to meet on, pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five, five, one dot zero seven four, the city council will convene into executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding the quarterly review of the city manager. Time is now six forty-one. You guys can stand here, we're going to step across the breezeway and convene into executive session. Time is now six forty-one. You guys can stand here. We're gonna step across the breezeway and convene into executive session.
All right.
Starting it with Mala, thank Susan.
Thank you Susan.
The time is 7:13 and we are reconvening out of the executive session into regular city council session. There is no action to take outside of the executive session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second and further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
With that we are adjourned. The time is 7:13.
You did pretty good on that gap of a dime.
Did you hear me say all those qualifications?
Yeah, the keeper.